Okay, let's bring this meeting to order. The Amador County Board of Supervisors. We're gonna have a special system going on there. When I ask you to please stand up, we're gonna be posting the colors, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the National Anthem. So please stand. Please post the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. This part we didn't talk about. Where do we? I gotta do a couple more steps. Okay. Public matters not on the agenda? Anybody wanna come? Everybody else maybe seated? I'm sorry. Anybody else have anything for the public matters on agenda discussion? I'm telling you, no tax action will be taken. Any person may address the board at this time. Any, on any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County. I know this is gonna be a bad day. Come on up.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Go ahead and speak into the microphone.
Thank you, everybody, for your time this morning. My name is Stacy, and I'm from Public Health. And the reason I'm here today is we're actually doing a food drive to help support Interfaith Food Bank and also the folks in need around the county. What there is is a big gap between Thanksgiving and the winter Christmas holidays. So what we're trying to do is fill up the pantry. So everyone at the HHS building is participating. We're gonna have a drive-through food drive. And you just come on in, drop the food off with the Interfaith food truck. We're gonna do it from eight to six on the ninth of December. So we wanted to let you guys know if you wanted to pop on by and check it out. We're trying to do something extra for the community.
Thank you.
Yes. Any questions?
The ninth.
The ninth.
All day on the night.
All day on the night. That's all you have to remember. You show up after six, I'll hang around. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a? Anybody else on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, four zero one. Approval of the items on consent agenda, public?
So moved.
Second.
Zoom, okay. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed?
We got one, one stuck in Chicago.
What's that?
One stuck in Chicago.
Yeah, and we have one stuck in Chicago.
For the supervisors.
One of the supervisors here is Dan Epperson. Okay, two A, continuing on with the flag presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Now it's your turn.
Thank you. I wrote something this morning. And I wanna make sure I get everything in that I wrote. It's only a couple minutes.
That's fine.
Guys don't mind.
Floor is yours.
Good morning. First, we would like to thank Supervisor Onetto and the rest of the board for having American Legion Post 108 to join you. Americanism. So Americanism is the Fourth of July barbecue, the raising and lowering of the flag, half-mast, New Year's Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving. Americanism is one of the four pillars of the American Legion. And American Legion Post 108 would like to present the American flag to the board for their administration building as a backup when needed. Also, Post 108 will be delivering flags to local fire departments, sheriff, police departments in our local cities around the county. Adding to that, we plan to deliver flags to the schools and monuments. And this will take a little bit of time to set up because we have to make appointments like we did here. Thank you, gentlemen. God bless America. Sergeant at Arms, will you please bring our flag forward and deliver it to Chairman Brown? This ends our presence today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody of the? Any of the supervisors wanna say anything?
Yes, I would. I think that was real nice. And I think we should always look at what our veterans have done for our nation, for us individually, the freedom that they've kept for us. And just an item of interest. Many years ago, when my dad was a little boy, maybe six miles up the road here, they were having a family, just get together, normal day. And the old folks started talking Italian. So the kids started talking Italian. And they told them, no, don't you speak Italian. You speak English. We're Americans. And in some ways, I wish I hadn't done that because I wish I spoke Italian. But the point I'm making is people came here years ago. There was probably an encouragement to assimilate, but also, yeah, they were tired, but we're Americans. That's our loyalty. That's who we are. And I'm glad that I'm, I wish they hadn't done it. We had like to speak Italian, and very glad they did because I think that's what, in order to keep a nation intact, you need, we're Americans. So just an item of interest. Thank you.
Anybody from the public? Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Onto two B, Pine Grove Cemetery. Discussion of possible action relative to the transfer of Pine Grove Cemetery to the Amador County from the Pine Grove trustees.
Yes, good morning, supervisors. The board did consider this back in May. And the board, at that time, supported the idea of the trustees finding a private entity to take over the cemetery. And that didn't happen. But a little bit of background. In 1870, pursuant to federal law at the time, the county judge could approve townsite maps and dedicate various public use parcels for the benefit of the public. That was done with the townsite map for Pine Grove. And what the court did at that time was appoint various community members as trustees to oversee and manage those public use properties. The town hall, which at that time was called the Temperance Hall, the park, and the cemetery, and there was a school lot as well. And so from that point, 1870 through the early 2000s, that's what happened. The court would appoint trustees. Trustees would take care of those public use lots. And at some point, the court asked the question, why, why are we doing this? And the county looked into it, the court looked into it, and we came to the conclusion that those public use parcels should have been dedicated to the, to the public entity responsible for them when that map recorded. So despite what had happened, that, like, those public use parcels should have been the counties, the cemetery, the town hall. And at some point, the town hall did transfer when the county wanted to do some improvements. But the cemetery continued to be operated by the trustees. And the, the last trustees to have been appointed, there are two left, Keith Brizzy and Sandy Travaskis. And those two, along with Linda Brizzy, have basically run the cemetery by themselves for the benefit of the public since they've been appointed. But they've reached a point where they just can't do it any longer. And, and really, it's the county that's gonna have to sort of step in and take over that cemetery. So there are actually three parcels. One was the original cemetery. One was, had been originally the school lot, but then was used as a cemetery. And then the trustees obtained a parcel from a neighbor. So there are three total parcels to be transferred. So all the board has to do is accept the resolution, and all the steps are included, including the, the resolution of acceptance, the, and everything that needs to get signed and then recorded eventually.
I just wanted to add one other thing. I'm learning in this job that we used to be able to afford a lot of things in this county, and it's becoming more and more of a challenge. And we're figuring out why. And it's a lot of the things that were very important to the community were done by these unsung sacrificial volunteers. When we started this process of taking the cemetery, we discovered that the Brizes and, oh, what's her name?
Sandy?
Sorry, Sandy. We're doing, I don't know, thousands of hours worth of work, thousands of hours of taking care of it, thousands of hours of reorganizing when the Brizes and... Sandy? Sorry. Took it over. The plots that had been sold weren't mapped, and they were on, basically, Post-it notes before Post-it notes existed. So cue cards and the organization process fills volumes. And that was all thousands of hours worth of work. So I just wanna say that we are very appreciative of the work that you've done, and it's, and it's our time to take over. So thank you for what you've done.
I think I would echo that. I'd say, very well said.
Anybody else from the public?
It's also, it's also nice to see Keith moving along, so it's good.
Anybody from Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. So is that your motion with waiving the reading and resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you guys have anything you'd like to say?
Okay. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is four zero one. Thank you. We truly appreciate it.
Sorry, Sandy.
Okay.
I think Supervisor Cornell owes you a box of chocolates.
Okay, we'll go on to two C. Presentation and adoption of resolution celebrating the raising of awareness of National Adoption Day Children in Foster Care in Amador County. So I am going to read the resolution first. And if anybody else likes to speak, please come forward. Resolution proclaiming, no, excuse me. I knew this was gonna be a bad day. November 20th, 2025 as adoption day in Amador County. Whereas Amador County recognizes the importance of giving children safe, loving, permanent families through adoption. And whereas more than 100,000 children in the United States foster care system are awaiting to be adopted. And whereas many children in Amador County are waiting for permanent families. And whereas the courts in Amador County will open their doors on November 20th to finalize the adoptions of local children and join others' organizations to celebrate all adoptions. And whereas this effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states, will offer children the chance to live with stable and loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a difference, powerful difference in the lives of children through foster care adoption. Therefore, be resolved by the Amador County Board of Supervisors to hereby proclaim November 20th National Adoption Day.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors.
Morning.
I'm happy to be here. I'm Andrea Sexton. I'm the Court Executive Officer from the Amador Superior Court. And on behalf of the Court and Presiding Judge Renee Day, I'm so pleased that you are recognizing Adoption Impermanency Month that we celebrate every November. This Thursday, the Court will host its third annual Adoption Day event. And I'm sure you all know that most folks don't come to court for joyful reasons, but adoption calendars are one of the highlights and truly a bright spot in our court calendar. So this Thursday, we're going to host, again, our third annual event, which is to bring attention to the needs of children and youth in foster care throughout the state and raise awareness of the need to find loving, safe, and permanent homes for children waiting to be adopted from foster care. And it's a day of celebration. We invite families who've gone through the process to come to the court, to be recognized, to be celebrated, and to share in a sense of community. And it's, and again, it's just a, it's a phenomenal event that we're able to host. The Court recognizes that it is, is truly love that makes a family. This is important work. And the reason that we're able to, to host this event is, is not done alone. And so I do need to recognize our participating agencies, phenomenal partners in this process, Sierra Child and Family Services, Amador County Child Protective Services, and their tireless workers who work to represent children and youth. The Amador CASA Program and Nexus Youth and Family Services. And we have, go ahead and stand up. We have some wonderful team members from the Amador CASA Program, the court-appointed special advocates, and Nexus Youth and Family Services, and the California Department of Social Services. I also need to recognize court team members, Heather Gardella and Bonnie Morris. They don't want me to do this, but they're really, they're really driving this event. And again, it couldn't be done without them. So please join me in celebrating families who provide permanent loving and safe homes to children and youth in Amador County through the adoption process. And thank you again for taking the time this morning.
Okay, anybody else from the public wanna speak on this? Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, back to the supervisors. Anything from?
Yeah, I have something I'd like to say. The word deserve is thrown around our country often, and I'm hesitant to use it. But except when it comes to children because children didn't ask to be born, and they deserve all the provision and protection. And my family's been involved in foster care and CPS. And now, I told my daughter I wouldn't embarrass her. Eh, what the heck? No. Anyway, we, we adopted, and it's our most favorite thing that we've ever done in our lives. And now what my daughter is working for, Sierra Child and Family Services. And so it's become generational. And I just wanna say thank you to all the unsung heroes in CPS, the FFAs, the multitude of private organizations, all of the organizations you mentioned, the judges, the courts, the county councils, all of the parents, all of the foster parents, all of the adoptive parents, and all of the faith-based entities that, that support that as well. So thank you all.
Anything else from the supervisors?
Yeah, my daughter was supposed to give a speech, so. Yeah.
I don't think you're getting it.
Nope.
Okay.
I'm getting it. I am gonna get it.
But so we'll do this again. Are you, is that is your motion?
My motion is, what are we doing?
We're adopting a resolution proclaiming.
To adopt a resolution proclaiming.
November 20th.
November 20th, National Adoption Day. And children in foster care in Amador County.
Okay. First by Supervisor Cornell, second by Supervisor Crew. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that is four one. Would somebody mind coming back forward and accepting the resolution? Thank you. That was... We're on to item two D. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Adoption and Presentation of Resolution Honoring Rich Vila. And Rich is here. Cool, that's even better. Okay, upon his retirement from Amador County, suggested action. Well, I'm going to read his resolution right quick. It's never quick, but that's the wrong one. There we go. Resolution honoring Rich Vila upon his retirement from the Amador County of Amador. Whereas Rich Vila graduated from Jackson High School in 1978. And whereas Richard attended the University of Pacific in Stockton. And whereas graduated Magnum Culotte in May of 1983 with a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering. And whereas Richard holds a professional engineering license in the states of California and Wisconsin. Whereas Richard worked as the Associated Civil Engineer for Turlock Irrigation District during 1983, 1992. Whereas Richard served as city engineer, director of public works for the city of Mona, Wisconsin, during 1992 through 1997 and 2007 through 2011. Whereas Richard worked as project engineer for SAA Design Group in Madison, Wisconsin during 1997 to 2007. And whereas Richard worked as proposal development engineer statewide, utility engineer, and southwest regional maintenance supervisor for the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation during 2011 through 2020. And whereas Richard has served as a director of transportation and public works with, works with the county of Amador since 2020. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Amador, state of California, that said board does hereby adopt this resolution commending Rich Vila for his years of service to the people of the county of Amador. Okay. To the supervisors, anything you wanna say?
Yeah, I do. Looks like Rich traveled the world a little bit working. And I appreciate his efforts on behalf of the county. I know Public Works is a little bit financially challenged, but we appreciate his efforts to try to make things better for the community. And thank you for that.
Rich, did you wanna come up and say anything?
And being financially challenged is not his fault.
And it's not his fault.
No, he inherited that problem. Well, it's a little different coming up here before the board and not being scrutinized and under pressure and that sort of stuff. So I'd like to thank the board and including past board members, Richard Forster and Frank Axe, for allowing me to have the opportunity to serve the county of Amador. I know it hasn't been for a long period of time, but it's, and it was a privilege to do so. And I realize probably at times, I frustrated you people. But quite frankly, you frustrated me sometimes. So it's kind of the way it goes. And I'd like to thank the employees that, that, that I was fortunate to lead, both in the field and in the office during the time I was here. And lastly, but most importantly, I'd like to thank my wife, Tanya, for putting up with me during this time. She gets, she always got to hear about whatever complaints or challenges I was having with the job and whatever. And she was gracious enough to sit there and listen and, and nod her head and, and support me. So I, that was probably the most important support I had during this time. So anyway, again, I, again, I wanna thank the board and the county for the opportunity, and it was certainly a privilege to, to serve the county.
Thank you. It's been a, it's been an honor to, to work with you and all the things that we've had that conversations about and dealing with and everything else. So I very much appreciated everything you did. Anybody else from the public wanna speak on this?
Richard, I'd just like to say, I thought you did a bang-up job with the stuff we had to do. And we didn't agree all the time, but we seemed to some, pride some middle ground. And we made some mistakes, did some good things. But mainly, it's nice to see a Jackson boy come home.
Yeah, and as you mentioned, there are a lot of challenges to, to, and it'd be good to get some new blood in and some, you know, maybe some fresh ideas and whatever to try to tackle those challenges. And good luck to whoever that is.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
No move.
Second?
Okay. Supervisor Crew first, Supervisor Onetto second. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that is four zero one. This next one is, let me get the right numbers here. Two E. Presentation and adoption of resolution proclaiming the week of November 17th through the November 21st of 2025, California Clerk of the Boards of Supervisors Week. This is really for the young, sung heroes who actually control the Board of Supervisors. It's kind of hilarious. They do a, a great job at, at keeping us in line, keeping us going, keeping us in line, making sure we're, I have paperwork sitting in front of me, make sure I've got everything that I, I need for everything. I have paperwork sitting in front of me, make sure I've got everything that I need for everything. If you notice, it's a little bit larger font than everything else, so I can read it better. So, that's all the silly little things that our board keeps me out of trouble or the rest of us out of trouble. So, I truly appreciate it. With saying that, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas California counties provide many services that are essential to the lives of Californians. And whereas the position of the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors plays an integral role in the function of California County Government. And whereas the Clerk of the Board performs many legal mandated functions that protect and preserve the rights of citizens to an open and accessible government. And whereas the work performed by the Clerk of the Boards is a time-honored and vital part of local government. And whereas the Clerk's duties of recording, keeping, and revered their work among the earliest recorded of behalf of the public. And the clerks have long pledged and maintain an neutral and impartiality of the proceedings of government. Whereas the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Association, an affiliate of the California State of Association of Counties, is organized to promote the principle of good government and represents the interests of Clerk of the Boards with the legislative bodies and other professional organizations to encourage the development and professional growth and education and to support the objectives of all regional groups established within the association. Where it is the most appropriate that we recognize accomplishments of the Clerk of the Boards across 58 counties in the state of California. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Amador hereby proclaim the week of November 17th through the November 21st of California Clerk of the Boards of Supervisor Week in recognition of the highest level of services bestowed upon the people of Amador County and the public, people of California by the Clerk of Boards. There is, I've got to add one more thing to all this. Is there's books up in the Board of Supervisors from 1850, I would assume, that somebody of the Clerk of the Boards wrote every bit of notes that as we meet as the Board of Supervisor. It's really interesting to go through that history. And the funniest part for me is the fact is we've been complaining about roads since 1950. Always. There's, you know, and the neatest cursive you could ever possibly read is the books up there annotating all this. Supervisors, anything else you'd like to say?
Well, keeping us in line would be a very broad definition of what they do. Coming from private business, I got a real education. Well, you can't do that. Well, why not? Well, there's certain state law, and one of them's a felony, and okay, okay, okay. Just trying to take shortcuts. And I think that was probably the biggest lesson that I learned from the clerks. Oh, no, 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 no. And how to run the printer. Still haven't got that thing down.
I just had a, it's a really unique job. You have all the inside tea, and you can't share it with anyone. You have to hear all of the opinions, and you can't have one. So, it's just a really unique set of people that are capable of doing this job. But the part I appreciated the most as I walked in was this young lad who knew nothing. And the clerks reminded me repeatedly that it's all going to be okay. So, that was nice. Appreciate you. Thanks. Big shoes to fill there, Victoria.
Yeah, and I have to say, I've worked with Jennifer probably about almost 19 years. I don't know if they ever seen her had a bad day. I'm sure she did. But if she did, she didn't show it. But I'm always very, very helpful. I'm one of those people that I hate computers. I think they hate me. So, the ladies are always willing to help me with some computer issue I have. Other day, we had, I guess, an electronic glitch, and I got a call from somebody or a text message. They say, hey, you know, on the, like, the email that's sent out, it's the wrong agenda. And it's like an automated email. It just sends, it just does it automatically. And so, I talked to Clerk of the Board Jennifer, and I said, hey, Jennifer, looks like we've got a problem. She's, well, online, everything's posted correctly. Everything's correct everywhere else except that automated damn email. So, she came in, it was Friday night, everybody's gone. She came back, went in, fixed the problem, went home. I really appreciate her doing that. And she's done that many times. So, being a Clerk of the Boards, not just a job, it's also, it's kind of almost like being a Marine. You get done whatever needs to be done, and she's always done a very good job. So, yeah, and trying to keep us in line, on time. Sometimes I get text messages, hey, don't forget tomorrow, 8 o'clock, we got an earlier meeting than normal. So, it's a, I've told her more than once, you know? I think the clerks can run the Board of Supervisors just as well, if not better than Board of Supervisors. She says, absolutely not. But they're very critical and do a very good job.
We're always like herding cats, so that's always the fun part. Anybody from the public want to speak on this? Okay, anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Jennifer, Heather, Vicki, come forward.
Did we pass the resolution, Mr. Chairman?
I thought we did, didn't we? Did I not?
Make a motion that we pass the resolution with this red-
Oh, that's funny. I got so enthused about it. Hey. See, that's, I went sideways. I lost the-
Yeah, they should have called you on that.
Hey, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't write it down, so what did not happen. But we have pictures.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we are on to 2F. Presentation of recognizing Tacey Anneto Ruin, the Audit Controller of the entire staff of Amador County, receiving the award for county financial transactions reporting. As Chair, I get to do all the wonderful things that come to us, good or bad. I'm going to read this letter. It's from our state auditor, Mala Cohen. Probably not saying her name right, but that's neither here nor there. Dear Auditor Ruin, It is my great pleasure to congratulate Amador County on receiving this award for the county of financial transactions, transactions, reporting for preparing a complete financial transaction report for the fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2024. Your county met eligible criteria- I told you it was a bad day. Criteria to qualify for this award. Amador County's excellence in reporting helps my team produce accurate local government financial data, which is of vital importance to the policymakers, researchers, and constituents throughout California. Thank you for the contribution to this quality of transparency of public finances, which is in line with this year's 80th Amador County Auditors Conference theme, the auditor's role in trust, unlocking oversight and transparency. Please convey my congratulations to all county staff who contributed to your success in receiving this award. Now, this is the second year in a row you've received this award? Come on, come on forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's actually, for me, it's the 11th time in a row.
In a row?
Yes. And there are definitely counties that don't get the award. Some of them don't get it every year. It's the same report that the county of LA has to produce. This, there are no breaks for small counties. So, it's a big endeavor, and it takes a lot of time and efforts. And we always have to submit it before our audit reports due. So, we always have to have our, you know, our financial reporting intact and all the new Gaspys ready to go before we even get a draft of what our auditors have for our financial statements. So, yeah.
It is incredible. My in-laws used to be, you know, accounting teachers from college down to high school. And I had a wife, my first wife was a bookkeeper. So, I have a small knowledge of what you go through and keeping track of all that. And it's just incredible to make sure that instead of you Ts crossed and your Is dotted, is all your numbers exacting to where they want. The thing that's always impressed me is our budget, going through all that and making sure that we have all those figures and everything else, that it's going where it possibly can go. Because nobody truly understands, except your staff, of where part of the revenue comes from and where it goes. You know, that is, I mean, we try to hurt it, but again, it's crazy. So, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Board, anything else from you?
I was just going to say-
Oh, sure.
We also too, they don't give out awards for the special districts, but all the special districts in the county that have their money in the treasury, we have to send this same report for them. So, there's about 15. And they're all due at the same time.
Of course.
So, my staff, you know, they are incredible. And I just want to thank Chuck and the board for recognizing us today because, you know, we do some really important work that's in the background, behind the scenes. And we appreciate being recognized. And I think, you know, our office is so successful because of all the dedication of my staff. Who are, some of them are here today, so you can stand up if you like.
No.
All right. So, I just want to, I want to thank you all too. You, you know, surround yourself with good and smart people, and you will be successful.
I totally agree.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, just thank you for recognizing us. We appreciate it.
Oh, no, it's, you know, like, you know, that's the only thing as the Chair and Vice Chair, you know, you only see things every couple of years. So, that's the reason I did not know it's your 11th year straight, and that is just, that is incredible.
Thank you.
I very much appreciate that.
Now, you seem to run a very good operation down there. Roughly, how many years have you been auditor?
This 11. I had to count though, so I was like, how many did I, because I had to do one when I first started. So, that was interesting.
Well, I know when I first got elected, I'm in business, and I used to, you know, money in, money out, depreciation, yada, yada, yada. It's like, whoa, this is a different animal. It's very complex.
It can be, and it only is increasingly complex with our fun folks at the Gatsby office. So, some tough stuff, but we're getting through it. I have great people, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you've already received your letter to be official, so I don't have it to give you. So, but I thank you and your staff, so I appreciate it.
I'd just like to echo that and say thank you. I think we're very fortunate to have Tacey here as our auditor and the staff. You can see, it's not a huge staff, and we all, they all have to pitch in to get done what has to get done. All the money runs through that office, and it's a challenge. But just like everyone else, they pitched in and had to do more with less. And it's in support of the county operations. So, thank you.
And Tacey, you said you were in the background, but invariably, when Chuck and I start talking about money, one of our questions is, did we clear this with Tacey? Is one of the first questions that comes up.
I know that we have a lot of challenging things right now coming our way. And so, it'll be interesting. I'm sure we'll be chatting more.
Thank you.
Yeah, like the next, the next item will be coming up. It'll be another challenging item.
Yes, you're right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to 2G. General Services Administration assignment of contracts from Amador County Recreation Agency to the county.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
So, just to provide a little context, ACRA is dissolving, in the process of dissolving. And with that, the county is taking on two ACRA parks, and that's Molly Joyce, Lyons Park. And the county is also taking on maintenance responsibility for those parks and its other parks, which were maintained by ACRA. So, that's Molly Joyce, Lyons, Pioneer Park, and also Fiddletown Park. And the county is also taking on administrative responsibilities. We're in the process of putting a website together, and our goal is to facilitate the process for the public so the public can easily obtain the use permits it needs for the facilities. We want to guide them to the proper places when the county doesn't control those facilities. For example, they, they want a permit from Howard Park. We want to have that information on the website, make it as easy as possible, particularly for the school district. So, the county will not be doing the programming though, but the county is going to make it as easy as possible for the public to do its, have its events and carry on the way it is. So, that's the context here. With ACRA dissolving, they've got a few contracts that the county would be taking on, and that's what we're here for today. One of those contracts is the Molly Joyce Cell Tower contract, and that's an income contract. And so, if the county is taking on Molly Joyce, it just stands to reason that the county would take on the Cell Tower contract as well. That income would be used to help maintain the park. The other is the Little League contract. That's, that's a contract where the organization pays the county and we help ensure that this event goes without a hitch. Most of the maintenance or the organization responsibilities on the Little League, we're responsible for doing some basic maintenance. And then, the third contract is the one with Amador City. And that's, that's one that the county doesn't typically maintain properties that it doesn't own. So, this contract doesn't make sense for the county to assume. We don't have our head around exactly what that maintenance requires, but it's likely more expensive than $350 a month. It's maintenance of Amador City, its main park, its cemetery, and eight pocket parks. And then, I do want to throw out there that liability is usually arising from three things. It's arising from ownership, control, or maintenance. So, we do expose, the county would expose itself to liability for those parks if it were to maintain. So, the recommendation is that we, that you give me the authority to assume and enter into whatever amendments are needed for those first two contracts, but then, but not for the third.
Now, Amador City is requesting that we continue that third contract. So, it's up to the Board as to whether or not you want to do that. But there isn't a, an overriding need from staff standpoint to do so.
So, as we assume these contracts in these parks, the cost to the county increases. So, is there any discussion about the cost to Amador City increasing to an appropriate? increasing to an appropriate amount that would cover the cost?
Well, that's, that's one option is, is to renegotiate and get a, a true understanding of what those costs would be. And then, um.
Which is what we're having to do with Molly Joyce and with Lyons. All the parks we're assuming we're, we're taking on a greater financial burden.
It would probably be more appropriate to allow them to do it themselves. So as a city, they should function as a city, which means they should do their own.
And there's also probably a liability would come with maintaining those, wouldn't there be?
Yeah, absolutely. That, um, as I was saying, that's, that's a basis for somebody bringing us into a lawsuit if there's an injury on one of those parks. They go after the owners, the controllers, meaning the tenants, and then the, anyone who maintains it.
Glenn, you said there were eight pocket parks?
Eight pocket parks.
Have you seen it? Are they just vacant lots? I can only think of one.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I, I haven't dived into that yet.
I'd be a little hesitant to see with that.
Yeah.
Well, they did just get, didn't we just give about $30,000 in impact fees to build a, another park on the hill above Amador City in Amador City? That might be one of them.
It was fencing or something, yeah.
It was by the town hall or thought.
It was up on the hill.
Yeah, there was, Amador City did get some money. I, I don't recall the, the specifics. Do you, do you?
It was impact money that the, the board gave to Amador City to, was fencing and, I can't remember.
Like a sitting area that looked over town. There was some.
That may be the main park.
Pines that had to be removed.
Yeah, I think that is the main park.
Oh, that is the main? Oh.
Looks right down on the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be a little bit hesitant to take, take on that contract because I think, um, I don't know if it, there's a liability. They're probably, I don't want to pay much and they're probably gonna want a fair bit maybe, be my guess, um, as far as what they're gonna ask for. I mean, and it's not, it's, it is a city park, so.
Well, going back to the original item, I mean, the first item on here is a cell tower. I did get an email this morning. As far as the cell tower, nothing needs to be done. The GL runs through with the land. So when the deed is recorded to the county, uh, the GL goes with it. The only thing the county will need to do is, on their end, is provide a W-9 and payment direction form once the property is in their name.
There was an option amount, was there, is there a lease amount for that monthly?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, no, that was just the initial, I think it's $1,100.
Okay, that'd probably help pay some of the cost up there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, wanted to keep it in the, in the park system somewhere.
So all other contracts with all of the other cities are, we're not assuming any of those? This would?
There were, there were only the three. There were two more with the county, but those would go away because we're taking on those, those responsibilities anyway.
Okay.
So just the cell tower, the Little League contract, and then the Amador City maintenance. The other ones were, I believe, the, the Pine Grove Cemetery. So we're, we're taking that on, then, then we're obviously maintaining it.
Was this?
Well, I thought they had something for the Plymouth Pool. Maybe that went away?
Yeah, those, those, the pool contracts, um, those did go away. The, the cities took on those responsibilities because I think there was some money to be made.
Okay.
The, the last city that had a contract was Sutter Creek, and it's really only for the summer. So that, that contract to operate the Sutter Creek Pool is expired. So Sutter Creek will have to, will have to figure out their own pool. But Plymouth had already decided that they wanted to operate their own pool, as did I own.
Takes some.
Jackson. So most of the contracts where Acra made money were, have been pooled over the last few years, leading us to this point?
Yep.
Okay.
So one thing, if, if the board wants to, well, accept that Little League contract, I think the, the action should be to either, as Glenn requested, authorize him to sign any, uh, contract amendment or assignment, or, or to authorize the chairman to do so. Cause that, that's not before you today because Acra hasn't, this is sort of a, before, Acra hasn't assigned it to you yet. But when that happens, we'll have to have some kind of an agreement.
Can we just say, give them authority to sign any legal documents as necessary?
Yes, and do, but you wanna have the chairman do it? Or do you want to authorize?
Either, either or.
Okay.
Well, do we have a motion? Or actually, we need to go out to the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Back to the board, any?
Well, I'd make a motion that we assume the Molly Joyce Cell Tower contract and the Molly Joyce Little League contract, do not assume the Amador City contract. And we give the General Services Director, Glenn Spitzer, and Chairman, whoever that may be, um, authority to sign any legal doc, documents as necessary.
Okay. First by Supervisor Anetto, second by Supervisor Crew. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passed 4-0-1. So you're going to coordinate with Amador City as far as, you know?
Letting, giving the, the news?
Yeah.
I could do that.
Okay.
We'll reach out to Sandy.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 2H, Presentation of the 2024 Crop Report.
I have copies, hard copies if anybody needs one. There's also some at the back for the public. Good morning, my name is Eric Mayberry. I'm the Agricultural Commissioner, Board of Supervisors, Chairman Brown. It is an honor to be here, uh, to present to you on the 2024 Amador County Annual Agricultural Crop and Livestock Report. So every year, the Ag Commissioner is required by law to, um, collect the numbers, um, from the farmers of what was produced in the county and to present this report. This, um, this value, if you look at the overall value, um, is up a little bit from the prior year. And although the numbers aren't where I believe that they should be because they're kind of below the historical average, they are up from, um, where they have been in the last two years. We've kind of been going down for a couple of years. And this year's numbers kind of does show a slight increase. So that kind of, um, arrests that downward trend.
These are for the year ending 24?
2024, so like for the 2025 numbers, you know, we, we would be collecting those later on, in the next couple of months and presenting that a year from now. So we're always looking one year back. Farmers, um, sometimes don't get paid the day that they, um, harvest. Sometimes it takes them months to, to, to get paid. And so then they report those numbers back to us. So we're always about a year, um, in arrears. But the, um, you know, the total of $42,347,000 is almost a 19% increase from the previous year's production value. And so, um, you know, that's good. Uh, wine grapes are tough right now. It's, it's difficult, but, um, the wine grapes did increase both in price and in production a little bit. Historically, you know, the total number of grapes in this county are, you know, 30 or 40% more than actually got harvested. So there is a lot more room to go back up. But, um, that did help. And then, of course, there was timber production this year. The prior year, there was zero timber production, um, recorded in the county. And that does fluctuate based upon the contracts that they have for, um, harvesting wood in the county. So, um, go ahead and take a look if you have any questions or comments. I'd be glad to answer your questions at this time.
Well, it looks like we harvested more alfalfa, but, uh, the price dropped immensely.
Yeah.
You know, one question I'd have is, are these actual, how do you, are these actual numbers? Because look at the wine grapes.
Okay.
You're showing a drop in acreage harvested, but you're showing the price being higher. And I didn't think they're getting $2,000 a ton.
Well, so there were a lot of, there were a lot of people that chose not to harvest because the price was too low to make it worth, you know, hiring somebody to, to help them pick the crop. And so because of that, you know, if the price is low enough, then that takes a certain amount, you know, cause we have almost 5,000 acres planted, right? And so that means that, you know, 30, 40% of the grapes were not harvested. And so the, the numbers that we get, the price per, um, ton that we get are from the people that actually chose to harvest. And so, you know, there's a lot of zero numbers in here that are not included in the report, right? And so, um, if, if you, if you don't have a contract and you're not able to sell your Zenfandel, for instance, this year, you know, those numbers are not included because they're a zero. So, you know, that you're, we're averaging the numbers of the people that actually were successfully able to sell their grapes. And so therefore that number, that number is the one that we have.
Okay.
But you, you're absolutely right, Brian, that's.
So these were actual reported numbers?
These are reported numbers. We only, we only count the numbers that are reported to us. If someone doesn't report because they didn't harvest, of course, we don't have those numbers.
Okay.
But that's the way it is every year. So we're comparing this to the same thing last year. And so, you know, compared to 2023, there is a, you know, a small increase in the total number. So there were people that picked this year that didn't pick last year, or there are people that got a higher price this year than they got last year.
Yeah, okay.
Did you get any explanation from SBI as why they didn't harvest any timber in 2023 in Amador County? And from what I gather, they didn't have any, any harvest plans in 2025 either.
Yeah, so we normally don't speak to the timber companies specifically. There was only one year where we, that we actually had to talk to them because it was really weird. But, um, I also worked in Calaveras County for a long time and they actually have more contracts in Calaveras than they do here. And so when I talked to them at that time, you know, they do have different contracts, whether it's, you know, they're doing cedar for fence pickets this year or they're doing, you know, lodgepole pine for, you know, studs in the houses or whatever. You know, if the price is up for a particular product, they're gonna be harvesting that product. And if there is, let's say that there's a burn and, um, they've got to get that wood out, like now, before it starts to go rotten, they will focus all their energies in Sonora this year. And then the next year, maybe that there is a situation in Amador County, like after the Caldor fire, where there was a lot of effort that was moved in here to remove a lot of wood while it's still standing and there's some market value for it, right? And so they'll, they'll remove a lot of stuff. But 2023, there just, there was, there was no, there was nothing removed. And we don't get this number directly from those timber companies. We get it from a, um, a state agency. Usually I think it's the, um, State Franchise Tax Board.
Well, there was some debate over all of those trucks driving on our county roads while no harvesting was going on in our county, so it's just.
Yeah, I, I follow them down the road every morning.
Yeah, but none of those logs are being taxed in Amador County, so.
Well, you know, there are some logs that are on federal lands and, and different things that may not be, Brian might be able to speak to this better than I do.
Yeah, I think you had the Caldor fire. And there were just, just, just unbelievable amount of, uh, SPI ground, enforcers' ground that got burnt. So I think it was all happening over there. And I, and maybe if you're going to board equitation, I'm not sure, can't remember. I think, I think you pay timber tax on federal, federal land too, so.
But again, you, you go up to Omo Ranch Road or Caldor and you turn left and you only gotta go to about a mile or whatever and you're out of the county already, so.
Yeah, and the.
You know, a lot of those lands are not in our county.
I, I think 88 might be the line.
Pretty much, so you, you'll see that, you know, the truck's coming down 88, but, you know, that, that wood was not harvested technically in our county.
Well, the ones coming up out of the river on 26 too, and they come down through Pine Grove and then across Climax, so.
Yeah, coming out of Calaveras, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, questions from the board? Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
I got one comment. It may be a little bit off subject, but I think it is on subject because, um, I see we got a weed advisory committee, um, group was on the consent agenda.
Yes.
And we got a weed now, my one brother, and at first I thought, I don't know about that. But I got, looked around and I think he's right. It's that stinkwort?
Stinkwort, yeah.
It's probably gonna be worse maybe than star thistle. I mean, it is some gnarly stuff. If you pull up with no gloves on, you can get like a reaction, something. Couple of people I was talking to, one of them, both got kind of sick and one thought he'd have to go to the hospital. I mean, just kind of couldn't breathe and stuff.
Right.
So it's, um, it's kind of toxic. It's, it's, if you look up by the Italian Society, they have that parking lot right off 49. You'll see it spreading from the highway going across that parking lot. And it, and it, it is some nasty stuff.
Yeah, I see it outside my window every day. We probably, when I say we, of course, I mean the facilities, the county facilities department, removed a couple of trailer loads just around our office and the, and the airport and county properties around there. It is, it is a growing problem and it is spreading. And it is, it is controllable. There are products that control it, but, um, a, a lot of the products that, you know, most people can buy at the hardware store or whatever are less effective. So it is, I think it's, it is a problem that's going to become worse.
If you want to talk to the university cooperies extension, you tell if they can find something to get rid of that, we'll, we'll put the $25,000 back and probably maybe add a zero behind it.
Yeah.
So give them some motivation.
Well, you know, I think they have done some studies and they, they do have some stuff because we did talk to them to get some advice on what we should use to control it. The problem is, is, you know, we have gotten some grants to eliminate certain weeds. But unfortunately, the, the way that those work is, they want to see success, so they want to see us eradicate, um, something. And because this is a, a weed that we're probably going to be losing ground in the next couple of years, um, it's difficult to get funding because you, you need a lot of man-hours, a lot of people, um, treating it because it is everywhere. And so therefore, um, you know, it's difficult to get grants for, um, a weed that we're kind of losing the battle on. They, they like winners.
Is that also true about the brooms?
Well, yeah, the brooms, um, 20, 30 years ago, we, we put a really hard push on the brooms. And, um, people kept buying it and planting it. It, it just, it was very frustrating. Even in places where we would remove it from subdivisions or neighborhoods or whatever, somebody would go, you know, find some in the valley or whatever and plant it.
I think Pine Grove's almost lost to it now.
It is absolutely, and then again, mentioned fires. Like if you look at the Butte Fire, um, in the, in the Moke River right there, both sides of the, the river, Calaveras side, it's just atrocious. You see, and broom just took over in that entire burn scar.
All up Charleston and Ram's Horn and I, it looks like the Persian hordes coming at me when I look out my window. Every time I look, it's gained an extra 15, 20 feet coming up the hill.
Yeah, the, the, the board back in, I think, the 80s or whatever it is, actually did an ordinance specifically to broom. They gave, they had commissioner authority to go and kill broom wherever they saw it. And, um, there, there was significant efforts made and, and.
And they, they're not gonna happen again?
Well, it's just, you know, it, it really comes down to funding. We, we would have to divert all the road money if we wanted to get rid of the broom. Just every dollar you spend for the roads, we could divert it to get rid of broom and we could maybe get it, maybe.
I checked out one of the pullers.
Even then it's tough, I mean, it's, it's everywhere.
I checked out one of the little pullers.
Yeah, the weed puller. Yeah, we, we check them out like a library book.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah.
It's like going to Lake Tahoe with a bucket and taking a bucket out and thinking that like the lake level's going to go down or something is. Yeah, I'm going to try it though. I tried to convince my wife to do it.
Yeah, when, when the ground is soft.
Yeah.
It works very well. If you try to do that in July or August, it is frustrating because it's like pulling rebar out of concrete.
And then you break it off and then it grows back anyway, so.
Yeah, but this time of the year, actually a couple of weeks ago, after that first rain that we had was kind of the ideal time. And, and again, our facilities department went and, and manually removed a lot of it on the county properties.
I've got a place at Popeye with, had Scotch broom. And I told, it took me, I want to say about 15 years of going up, pulling it and it got progressively less and less and less, but it, it, it's pretty, it's pretty hearty.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, thank you, sir. This was presentation only.
Thank you.
Two I, discussion of possible action relative to the request of the city of Plymouth to extend their and/or other, otherwise alter the repayment schedule, the 150,000 loan taken by the city for the repairs of the Arroyo Ditch. In 2017, the funds originally came from the Water Development Fund. Come up forward.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Cameron Bigby, interim city manager, City of Plymouth. In 2017, the city council entered into a loan agreement with you guys to repair the Arroyo Ditch from some infrastructure after the Sands Fire. You guys were generous, generous enough to give us a five-year deferment on our payments and also on the interest. I'm a little embarrassed to be here today, although this happened long before I did. I have no explanation on why we have essentially defaulted or not made any payments on that. And it was brought to my attention by the auditor's office that this needed to be handled. And I come with my hat in hand. We're, Plymouth is, is, like a lot of cities, is, is struggling financially. We've done some pretty neat things in the last two and a half, three months since I've been there to kind of ride our budget and get it back on the right path, maybe have some revenue generation coming in. And I'm asking for your grace in restructuring this loan, maybe pushing it out another year or two to get us, give us a chance to get our feet underneath us and just do what we can to save the city. And I'll leave it at that. Any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Got to be careful defaulting on loans with an award-winning auditor around.
I was sitting there, you know, hearing the agenda, I was like, oh my gosh, you know, resolution after good resolution after good resolution, she gets recognized and I'm going to come up here and for mercy.
I guess one question I'd have is.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if you give you more time, do you see down the road a year or two, maybe be able to make some payments on this?
Sir, I would like to start making payments within the next year. I just didn't, I wasn't aware of this to have it for consideration of this budget, which we passed in early, earlier at the end of September. But I think, I mean, it's our, it's our duty to, to make it right. And as long as I'm sitting in this chair, my, my, my job and my duty is to make it right with all, all, with you and with everybody that we do owe.
What's your suggestion?
I would like to start making payments by, by July. I don't plan on pushing out our next budget if I'm here, but I'd like to lock the city into that. If we could ask for forgiveness on, on the interest rate for at least another two years to give us a chance to knock that, our payment down a little bit, that, that'd be amazing. I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask you guys for another five-year extension. And it's not my intention to, to prolong this any, any longer than we have to.
So you're asking for, start making payments like in July?
Yes, sir.
And no interest for two years?
If that's possible, yes, sir.
Would that be including the back interest too?
If you're willing to entertain that.
That's the whole thing on this, this fund is, it's not a money-making fund, but you know, we need to at least keep it, you know, going for situations just like this. So we need a, a little bit of interest to, to help and keep it going.
I understand that.
Well, I will say this, I think, I think they probably helped the county's finances a little bit by the amount they paid the sheriff's officer that contract over there. Wasn't it like 400,000?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and it goes up, I think it was just under 400,000 for the first year and then it progressively goes up over the next five years.
And are you paying that?
Yes, sir. If we haven't, then that's something that we need to address as well, but I'm, we're in damage control mode right now. And so I think we owe it to the, the citizens of Plymouth to, to ask for everything we can and all the help we can. And, but we, we will be paying our, our sheriff's bill if that hasn't been done yet.
Well, you'll have a better clue of what's happening with your budget in July. So, you know, can you, I mean, with the board's approval, is maybe you come back in July and tell us what your, what your plan is, you know, once you get a, your head wrapped around everything?
If I'm still here, I absolutely will, sir. We, we just approved at last week's council meeting, some revenue generation ideas, and we're opening up our wastewater treatment plant to step ditch dumpage from outside companies. And that, it won't take care of all of our problems, but it's definitely going to help us get us in the right, right direction.
Well, I think, I think you've been trying very hard. I mean, I think you're working for the people over there and I do appreciate that. Some of the past managers have been there and filled the seat. I don't know how hard they're working for the people, but so, yeah, I appreciate your efforts. And if you wanted to hold this over and see how things are in July, I'd probably be okay with that. I might kind of.
I'd add one stipulation to that, because you say if you're there. So there's some note on your wall when you leave that says, by the way, this has to be dealt with in July, just so the next guy two years from now doesn't step in the same mess.
Supervisor, I plan on definitely doing a better passover than those.
All right.
We have a, we have a saying around the office, if, if it was before Cameron, it wasn't our problem to create, but it's our problem to fix. And so that's what we're here doing.
Jeez.
I mean.
If we let this go on and we, you said we loaned that money out on current to 1% over life?
Correct. And that's what, that's what this agreement has is 1% over life, but life has gone up. And that's, that's the kicker. You know, when we, when we entered into this, it was three quarters of a percent. And now it's at what, four and a half? So.
There's another issue.
Yeah. So, but this is, just a reminder, this is not general fund dollars that we're loaned out. This is the, the Water Development Fund that we use for, for funding things like this. And the, the, the board has set a policy that you don't want to make grants out of it, but I think as long as, as you're getting the principal back, I think you're, you're within the, the intent of that.
So, you know, we've got the calculation sitting here in our agenda, so I'm willing to hold over until July is.
Did the money fix the problem?
Sir, we're still investigating that.
On the ditch?
I hope so. I really do. And I wish I had an answer for you. And to be honest with you, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit frightened to go dive too deep into that.
Does this need to be a motion or a direction?
I think direction is fine, Daisy, yeah.
Yes, please.
I also just wanted to thank Mr. Bigby and commend him for addressing this immediately. Chuck and I have been working with former city staff on this every year. This has not been, it's because we have to send out a confirmation for our audit saying, you know, you agree that this is how much you still owe the county. And it's, it's old news.
Right.
But no one has stepped up to address the problem and take care of it. So really appreciate Cameron coming here and working with us and trying. So I think it means a lot.
The interest will continue to accrue until the board formally waives it, but yeah, we won't consider it in default.
So come back in July.
Chairman, I appreciate you. Thank you.
So unless anybody disagrees with me? Okay.
I will say one thing, I think it would be, as far as possibly waiving some interest, it would, I'd like to see a payment made in July, something along that line.
Sir.
And if it shows you're, you're working on it, I'd be more liable, more willing to do something along that line.
I can make that happen here. Thank you.
So I guess you're also on two J.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, but yes, we are.
Discussing a possible action relative to request from the city of Plymouth for an extension to the agreement of park impact fees to utilize at the Veterans Park in Plymouth.
I have a clarification on that. Those were not park impact fees. That was my bad. They, they were, they, the money came out of the memorial fund for this, not, not impact fees.
Okay.
Sorry about that. And all they're asking for is an extension on time. So they have the money in hand and just to get it done. So staff would recommend an extension.
How's it going?
How long do you think you need?
And I apologize, Mr. Riley, I wasn't prepared for that. This was the, I was my big one. I don't have a timeline on you. I, I can't tell you that the park improvements, I mean, if you haven't driven by the park, I, I welcome you, come by, happy to give you a tour. It's, it's phenomenal. The, with the partnership of the Rotary and their Veterans Park Committee, that crew has just done a bang-up job.
It's looking pretty spiffy, it really is.
It looks amazing. We have, to kind of give you a rundown, we have these beautiful granite pill, or pillars with names of veterans from D5 on it. They've also put in, for each branch of service and QR codes. So whoever comes by can kind of learn the history of each branch of service. Plymouth Elementary is out there with, I think it was called Keep California Beautiful, excuse me for getting that wrong, but it was, they came out and planted in each grade level now at Plymouth Elementary, taking care of a planter box around these monuments. We're talking about right now, we have to update our irrigation to that, so that's what the money will be used for. And we're also talking about putting in a restroom at the facilities or at the park. We don't have one yet, so it's kind of tough for people that have that need to come in to end functions, but it, it's a phenomenal park.
Ridges, walking trails, yeah.
Yes, we do. Yep.
So if we extend by two years, then all we're waiting for is the documentation to come back to show that, how the money's been spent. So if we do two years, we can always extend further in the, in the future if needed, but I think two years would be.
The amount of money we gave them, they already have it.
They already have it, yes.
Has that been verified again?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that has been verified. Mr. Wise from the Rotary, he's on top of that.
All right.
I was going to say Rotary is normally very good about how they spend their money.
Yeah. Plymouth maybe not so much, but we're working on that too.
And actually, I would, I would say that Mr. Wise has been, he's worked really hard on it. I mean, heart and soul. It's, it's, it's a pretty cool park. It's looking pretty good.
I'd put it up against any park in the county, you know, as far as veterans go.
Okay.
Two years plenty? Can we pick a number that he doesn't have to come back and ask for another extension?
Like, I think two years would be fine, at least to give you an update on where the money's been. And I can actually probably get that to you in the next month, just so you're at least aware, so.
I'm fine with that.
So is this a direction or is this a motion?
It'd be direction, we bring in an agreement back.
Or we could do it that way, or, I mean, if we're just a simple amendment extending the term two years, you could approve it now and authorize the chairman to sign it. Then we won't have to come back. So move.
Okay.
Second. Oh, third.
All right. I, I appreciate you guys' time this morning, supervisor, so thank you.
Anybody on the public want to speak on this? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, does anybody need to take a break before 10:30?
That might, well, it's, it's pretty short, isn't it? A break would be nice at some point.
Okay. Well, she, yeah, we have to adjourn, but I just, well, we don't have our building people here right now. Well, let's skip on to two M. Discussion of possible action relative to the creation of the Park and Recreation Committee to serve the functions formerly performed by ACR. My request to the board is that Logan and I stay on as the new Parks and Recreation Committee for this next year. And so we can keep the coordination going on with the parks of what's going on.
So moved.
Okay.
Second, but under, under discussion.
Yes, sir.
The way govern, governance is run in California, why would we want to do something that logical?
Be nice.
Never work, Mike.
Makes sense, there's some way we can't do it.
Okay, anybody from the public want to speak on this? Okay, Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for volunteering, guys.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I didn't know you were, I didn't know that, I'm kidding. This was coming. What?
Well, let's just take a four-minute break right quick and then we'll come back at our 10:30 public hearing for the Amador Fire Protection District. So we're going to adjourn our meeting for, until that section is over with.
Uh, County Fire Protection District Board of Directors. What did I say now? Oh. Okay, I'm gonna forg- uh, for, oh shit, I can't do it. He does.
He's got you all messed up. I think I have competition down, down there.
I'm gonna forego the pledge of allegiance because we're gonna be doing it again at, at 2 o'clock. So I need approval of the agenda.
Second.
I heard it from her.
He wins.
He's quicker to you.
It's a hat.
It's a hat. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So 401. And this is discussion of possible action relative to the public hearing to consider the repeal of ordinance 011 and adopt 2025 California Fire Code Ordinance 013 Title 24 California Code of Regulations Part 9 as amended based on the local topographic and climate conditions, along with certain, uh, appendices and contained herefore. I now open the public hearing. Ta-da.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm a fire prevention officer for Amador Fire. Um, just to give a quick explanation on this one, the item being presented is to update the current ordinance that we have in place, um, from the 2022 code adoption cycle to the 2025 code adoption cycle. This is a regular occurrence that occurs every three years when the state updates the fire code, um, which is also based on the international code cycle. Not a lot that we have changing with this one. I did not, um, recommend any particular changes when adopting this one. Um, and then some of the biggest ones that I noted were changes to the lithium ion battery requirements and the safety procedures that surround that. And then as well as the Wildman Urban Interface Chapter was moved to its own particular section. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Is this mandated and is this just bookkeeping?
Yes. So this is a formality. This is mandated by the state of California. If we don't do it on our own, they will do it for us, um, come the new year. Um, this particular process allows us the option to adopt or deny certain appendices that they've given us the option to. Um, yeah, just a formality.
So the state just shows up and pushes their way around? Leaves us a bill. All right.
Okay. Anybody else from supervisors?
No.
Anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay. I have a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? So this passes 401. Back to the board for discussion or a motion. Don't jump out at once.
I know, but I messed up motions. I'm better at seconding.
Looking for a motion?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really crazy about it, but I guess I'll make a motion to, to approv- approve it.
Okay.
Done with 2025 California Fire Code Title 24 Code of Regulations Part 9.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That passes. And now that will, we'll adjourn the, uh, fire meeting until 2 o'clock this afternoon. We'll reconvene and we'll go back now to the, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Handoff.
I did.
Okay.
Need supervisor hands.
We can accomplish that.
Okay, 2K. Discussion of possible action relative to propose ordinance that would update sections of, oh, don't ask me, I'll read all these numbers, of the Amador County Code as they related to the speed limits. This would enact a speed limit change as directed by the Board of Supervisors in September of this year. I don't think Jeff knew to come in here.
I don't think he really needs to be here. This is, the, the board had authorized these changes already.
Okay.
Uh, simply, uh, step one in, in, uh, approving the ordinance.
Okay.
As I recall, the changes were minimal.
Very minimal, yes.
And this is updating and allow CHP to write tickets, more or less than anything else?
They can appeal at the December 16th meeting if someone-
Yes, yeah, we will, we'll, it'll be on-
Appeal would be 16.
Well, it, it will be on, yeah, on consent on the 16th.
Yeah, so the action today would be to waive the reading.
Waive the reading.
Put it over, uh, for adoption at the next board meeting, which is December 16th.
Then it's consent there.
Consent there, but things, things can get pulled off consent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do I make a motion that we waive the reading?
Is anybody from the public? Anybody from Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay, now you can do.
Oh, I forgot what Greg said. So make a motion to waive the reading and-
Schedule for adoption on consent at the next board.
Schedule for adoption on consent at the next board, on December.
Okay. First by Supervisor Cornell, second by Supervisor Crew. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes that one. Uh, Building Department consideration of possible action regarding, uh, ordinance repealing of chapter 15.04 of the Amador County Code, adding a new chapter 15.04 of the Amador, uh, County Code relating to adoption of 2025 California Building Code and related codes by reference.
Good morning, Todd Bar with Building Code. Um, this is, again, something that is done every three years. Um, will become law on January 1st. Um, we adopt this code so that we can adopt certain appendices and have a little bit of control of, um, the, the sections that we are enforcing. Uh, this year, basically, there's not much change. Matter of fact, there was a, um, a Senate bill that was passed, I think it's 230. Now I'm, for some reason, I can't remember the exact number, but it was passed that, uh, the residential code cannot be, no further restrictions from the current code could be enforced on the residential code until 2031. That was because of some of the fire damages and the rebuild, um, that's taking place, that was supposed to take place. And I guess it's taking place. So what it comes down to, like you said, is in the residential code, there'll be no, no, uh, any more restrictive code. Uh, the building code, there's so little that it's not even mentionable. Uh, it's, uh, I can't think of anything that's gonna have any effect whatsoever on us. So, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Todd, I just had one, more a philosophical one that I was reading in the B, some legislation that they, was an argument over a rebuild. If you change the footprint, like in the LA Fire area, you'd have to put sprinklers in, but if you built it on the same footprint, you would be exempt. Did that ever get straightened out?
I think that would go by jurisdiction. I-
That was a big fight down there. I think one city wanted to do it and two didn't and-
I don't think they figured much out down there. Okay.
I read that, Todd. Well, there's a mess.
And just a reminder, we still have the LRFD process in place too. So, uh, which kind of goes around. It allows you to, to use an older version of the building code if you qualify for, for the LRFD.
What would the process be to consider amending the property sizes on that LRFD and maybe allowing it for people on smaller properties?
Uh, it's, okay, LDRD, Limited Density Rule.
I was copying you.
That's okay. Actually, that is up to the board and we have had, we have made some exceptions.
So it's up to the board, we could consider a smaller property size?
Yes, it's your code and you can consider an exception to that. We bring every single, um, LDRD to the board for approval. So you guys do get to, uh-
And currently it's at five acres?
Right. So if we wanted to change that code, then we can put it on a future board meeting to discuss. If you wanted me to put it on for the 16th, we can talk about it there.
I'd just like to talk about it.
Yeah.
See the pros and cons of it.
Okay.
Getting pretty challenging to build for our youngsters.
Oh, boy. Yep, you can, we can do that. And then I'll just say that we have, uh, gone to a little bit smaller parcels. If, if you considered like the surrounding properties are larger or, um, you're within an acre or two, we have, uh, made some exceptions to that too, but sure.
Awesome. I will suspect some of our, uh, city fire, uh, fire chiefs will be opposed to that. So it'll be an interesting conversation.
Anything else?
Well, we need to do a waiving reading and schedule adoption for future meeting. Do we have that motion?
Do we have public comment?
Oh, public comment?
Not at this time.
And nothing on Zoom? So still looking for a motion.
Question, actually.
Yes.
In, in your memorandum, Mr. Bar, on the very last paragraph, you talked about as the last building code adoption, I have requested we adopt the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code?
Yes, that was a, that was adopted. But the International Property Maintenance Code does is it kind of mirrors the Health and Safety Code and the California Health and Safety Code. Um, it's just that, it's more specific and it's easier to, it's easier to understand. It doesn't ramble on as, as much. And I believe that, I mentioned that in here, uh, contains much of the same regulation.
So which one do you want us to adopt? That was my question.
What's that? No, it's the International Property Maintenance Code. But we've adopted 2024 is what we're, what we want to adopt with this.
Yeah, isn't that different than the California Building Code?
It is a little bit different. It deal, it, um, it deals with surrounding properties of residences and, and buildings.
Okay. Okay, so it, that would be separate then?
Yes, it'd be separate.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to adopt the re, adoption of the twenty twenty five California Building Codes And Related Codes By Reference.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And did you waive the reading?
Waive the reading.
Waive the reading.
And schedule for adoption at the sixteenth.
And who had the second?
It was me.
Okay.
Come on.
Was it LDRD?
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cool. Thank you, sir.
The LDRD is, uh, or LRFD is, uh,
LDRD.
Engineering book. Waiting for somebody to say it so that I could talk about it. I didn't want to sound dumb and then-
Took care of that for you.
We're on to two N. Rural County Representative California Discussion Apostle Action Relative To The Designation Of The Twenty Twenty Six Delegates And Alternates For Rural County Representatives Of California And Golden State Finance And Golden State Connect And Environmental Services Joint Power Authority. Um, currently Supervisor Netto is our delegate with me being the alternate. Um, does anybody want to change that?
You guys want to change?
I don't know. You interested in it?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
You want to stay as primary?
I guess I'll, I'll do it then.
Okay. One more year?
One more year. You'd, you'd probably like RCRC.
Waiting my turn.
Okay.
So do I have a motion? Well, actually, I need to go out to the public.
Jeff's on CSAC, right?
I'm primary on CSAC, alternate on RCRC.
Yeah.
So what I'm, I was kind of hoping for, you know, this open comment is when you decide not, if you decide not to run, um, I would take over and then I would give up CSAC.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Because I think I can do more on RCRC than I can on CSAC.
I would not argue with you.
Me neither.
I went to CSAC once or twice and it's like, ooh. Yeah, it was, it's pretty glitzy though. I'll give him credit for that.
It's lots of glitz. There is a lot of information at CSAC. That's what, they do educate you. Just scares you when they educate you.
So in upcoming years, there's gonna be a debate over CSAC, I guess?
Yeah. Well, there'll be debate for alternate. I mean, I would hope to get, you know, but it's always a debate. Never guaranteed anything.
So this is one time we don't have a debate. Let's run with it.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second by, second-
Keep it as late as it is.
Keep it as late as it is. Makes it easier for county clerks. So call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero one. Okay, just two O. Discussion On Possible Action Relative To The Approval Of The Twenty Twenty Six Meeting Schedule For The Board Of Supervisors And Board Of Equalization.
Uh, supervisor, like I put a proposed, uh, schedule there in your packet. Um, it looks like next year is a lot easier to deal with than this. Uh, this year was, we didn't have to move anything. Uh, I did, uh, trim the December meetings down to only one for December of twenty six. Um, and we are meeting, do have a scheduled meeting on the, uh, on Thanksgiving week, uh, for next year as well. Um, other than that, nothing else moved. Uh, I, on that proposed schedule, I did leave off the Board Of Equalization, uh, meetings because they only meet, uh, as needed during the summer. So June, July, and August, uh, are blank, but meet as needed. Uh, any questions or changes you'd like to see?
Is there any potential of putting the Board Of Equalization meetings on the same days as the supervisors' meetings?
We can do whatever you'd like to do, yeah.
Because that worked pretty effectively today.
They're just not always that easy.
We've had a couple of them the last couple hours.
Yeah.
What was with, when we redid the, uh, mill property?
You could, well, I was gonna say you could, I, I was gonna say you could start at eight with the BOE, but we go into closed session at eight thirty and there are days, uh, that we need to meet at eight thirty or even earlier to talk about issues in closed session.
And it's, it's not likely to have a Board Equalization hearing that often really.
Okay. Are they, they're not set like the board of supervisors where they have to be on the, I mean, they're supposed to be on the second Tuesday and-
No, I, I don't, I, I don't think-
So can the clerks make that judgment at that time? You know, if we-
Yes. Yeah.
So that we can say, hey, this one's an easy one. If it's just like the Kmart, they can say, let's merge this.
I believe so. I don't believe there has to be a set schedule like supervisor's schedule. I, I assume it's just done for certainty.
These are just placeholders, basically, that we can amend it.
But if there's a, if there's a contested hearing, then yeah, it would take more time than, than on a board day.
And we'd have a space held for it.
If we had one, it might have been a couple of years ago. We had lawyers-
So, direction to staff. Take a look at it and see what we get.
Matter of course, I think we could do it easy. Nope. We could also do the closed session after the meeting.
We could do that. We could, you could pretty predictably set it for, say, two o'clock. And it, it's rare that board meetings go that long these days. So, yeah, we could, we could just pull all the Board Equalization, uh, meetings off and go as needed or with the preference being on, on board days.
Board days would be nice.
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna suggest the same thing at about two PM. For the Amador Fire as well.
Okay.
Okay, so you want me to, I can strip them off and we'll just, just won't schedule anything and go, uh, yeah, okay.
What, do we have three this year?
I don't-
Two or three is all?
Okay, we'll do that and, I'm sorry. Okay, any other changes? The, um, yeah, because the Board Equalization on November third, I know will not
Yeah.
work because that will be election day. Uh-
Didn't even catch that.
Yeah.
Is there potential of, oh, wait, I'm looking at the wrong month? Of just considering one meeting in November as well, like we did this year?
Um, we could and-
At that time?
And go take the tenth and the twenty fourth and just put it on the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
We could do that if you'd like.
So take the one off Thanksgiving week?
Right, yeah. Take it off of Thanksgiving week.
And if you have something pressing, you probably, you could probably-
We can do a special meeting.
Yeah.
Some for non, for routine business matters, we could do, we only need three of you to, to approve the routine stuff.
Modern American families need seventeen Thanksgivings. It doesn't just happen with one anymore.
Okay. So we'll combine the tenth and twenty fourth and put it on the seventeenth in November.
You just want to go hunting.
Yeah.
Sounds like he's going.
Okay, so with that change, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the revised schedule.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Well, that will keep my motorhome out of the parking lot on that Tuesday.
Family first.
Okay. Review Impossible Approval Of The October Twenty First Board Of Supervisors Meeting Minutes. Any changes?
I hadn't.
Yes, sir. How are you?
Make a motion to prove.
Okay.
It's not good.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And so this concludes the board supervisors' meeting. Our next meeting is December sixteenth at nine AM. Thank you very much.
Well done, Mr. Chair, other than being tongue tied.